With the private sector of Mammoth Solar. They're wanting some uh G I S information. And this is nothing unusual. We've had them before in the past.
We get a person.
By the sector of Mammoth Solar, they are wanting some uh G I S information. And this is nothing unusual. We've had it before in the past.
We get a.
By the sector of Mammoth Solar, they are wanting um uh G I S information. And this is nothing unusual. We've had it before in the past.
We get a.
By the sector of Mammoth Solar, they are wanting um uh G I S information. And this is nothing unusual. We've had it before in the past.
Goodbye.
You're right. Hello.
We receive a a fee that they collect from the company.
Okay.
Um it's seven hundred and fifty dollars that they pay in advance uh for the information.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to let electronic map data. Whatever all the.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the W T H Electronic Map Data Application as described by Teresa. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. We were presented our meeting minutes from October sixth, two thousand and twenty five.
I've read the minutes and I'll make a motion to approve those.
Let's not go there. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October sixth, two thousand and twenty five. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, the approval of claims and payroll to uh number twenty one.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims and payroll twenty one.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve the claims and payroll number twenty one. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next, Edwin uh from Kersey dealing with the Madera Ville Fire Station Public Hearing. You can sit right beside Nathan.
Yes, this is a public hearing to receive any comments or questions from the public about the county's proposed application to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. For a seven hundred and fifty thousand public facilities grant. The local match is currently at nine hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. They are in discussions with the engineer to try to lower that amount. That's the maximum. That's all bells and whistles. They're gonna try to bring that down. Um the proposal goes in this Friday and then the full application will be submitted by December nineteenth. We will have to have a second public hearing in December before the full application and that's when the county will have to pass a resolution authorizing the application. Townships are not eligible to submit applications. That's why it has to go through the county. So we're now receive any public comments or questions.
Very good. We'll call the public hearing to order. Are there any comments concerning the application grant from Madera Madera Ville Fire Station?
Edwin, can you mention one more time the grant or the match amount?
Uh yeah, right now it's nine hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you.
So hopefully that will come down.
Being no public comment, we'll close the the hearing.
Okay.
There anything else? Edwin, any papers or?
Uh yeah, there were some papers that need signed.
Okay, alright. And then. Thank you for your work. Something that our community needs.
Also, what just while I'm here, I'll mention that we have our annual consultation meeting with N dot next week where we go up and meet with N dot in La Porte and talk about any projects or issues in transportation in the region. So if you have any issues or projects you'd like us to advocate for you to end up, if you'd let me know by Wednesday, we'll be sure to bring that up and let them know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You just email us.
Yes.
And I'll meet those signage.
What's that?
About top of the signage.
Okay, yep, I should post. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Laura dealing with extended hours.
Good morning. I am just now in the process of starting the fall settlement and collecting. And I wanted to extend the hours on November tenth, which is the last day of collection to six P M. I don't know how that will pan out with maintenance and closing and locking the doors. Um and I this has never been done before that I'm aware of, but I just thought it would be a good thing for the taxpayers. And in the spring I had people coming from Valverde, so La Porte, whatever. And they were, you know, kind of on the wire to get here by four o'clock kind of thing. So I just wanted to try this and see if it would work.
Good. I think it's a good idea. Good gesture.
It's gonna be a council meeting at six that night, so. Open back up anyway.
Sounds like they just stay over. Just work out, work that out for her either.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to extend the hours uh for November.
Ten.
Ten.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to extend the treasurer's hours on November the tenth. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Larry Weaver, maintenance, duct work done on the Justice Center.
Evidently at the last commissioner's meeting or something brought up about getting extra bids and stuff like that, which I believe falls below the criteria of receiving extra bids, but uh just to summary, Brent Smith from J and K come in. Did not charge us to evaluate the situation with humidity. Uh we've been doing business with them for ten plus years and I think we owe them a little bit of loyalty. And they just got done installing the uh new rooftop unit for the judge with the Judge Welker with the dehumidification in it. I would just ask the commissioners to approve this quote so we can start moving forward.
They've done quite a bit of work at the Justice Center for us?
Yes, they are under a service maintenance contract with us. So twice a year they come in. Uh the first year we had it done, they saved us a tremendous amount of money because they found three cracked heat exchangers that were under warranty.
What's the price again of the stuff work?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty eight thousand?
No, just twenty.
Twenty even, yeah.
You mentioned the threshold. What is our threshold?
I believe it's fifty thousand.
Fifty?
I think that's what Jacob saw last time.
Yeah.
And I did reach out to, he called himself Bones. Is that the guy you're referring to?
No, Brent is J and K. He actually just lives about five miles north of town on thirty five.
Okay. He mentioned the same thing that they were just under. I I asked if we were under any contract for any other work and he said only the um yeah, with the well, the Justice Center and just for um the service, you know, to do their service inspections, so.
I would say they currently service probably seventeen to eighteen of her units. Twice a year.
Okay.
Thank you. And they're good. Okay.
I'll make a.
Oh, good.
I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion to approve the uh twenty thousand dollar bid from J and K to do the duct work on the Justice Center.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation uh for the duct work at the Justice Center as presented by Larry Weaver. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Natasha, ambulance rotation.
Good morning. I have for you guys a proposed ambulance maintenance plan. Um some of it does hinge on possibly getting a newer truck than just next year. Uh we have two units that are not appropriately running. Um they're down more than they're up. Um this year we have spent four thousand, seven hundred and twenty four dollars to have an ambulance that has literally went two thousand, three hundred and five miles. Um the other one, it's not as extensive. However, it does have other issues going on with it. Um so it does in entail the uh actual cost of this year's maintenance as well as what the fleet looks like in this report. Um I would suggest that we get rid of the two thousand thirteen earlier rather than later. I did talk to a company um I have prepared for you. It is on Sourcewell, a new truck as well. Um but essentially it just goes through in details that I think that we need to work towards getting on a two-year ambulance replacement. So essentially this would allow for the ambulances to only be eight to ten years old. At this point, we have a two thousand thirteen that we actively have in the fleet, so it is aging. Um and that vehicle does have two hundred and ninety two thousand miles on it. It's just starting to nickel and dime the community. Um and like I said, it's not reliable. It well over four grand to get it to go two thousand miles this year. Um and then it just basically proposes the idea of every two years how to replace the ambulance. And at twenty thirty, once all those ambulances have been replaced, we can do this a lot cheaper, doing a remount and then switching back in twenty thirty eight to a new ambulance. Twenty forty six, getting back on the remount order. So essentially it would um allow for us to get into a good steady rotation, making sure that we have a new ambulance that then can be remounted cheaper, keeping that cost, that expenditure significantly lower. Um it details a reduction of wear and tear on the ambulances as well as um going through the funds and how to save and making sure that we have a vehicle fund. Are there any questions for me?
Do you have a vehicle fund currently? There is none and there's no rotation at all. I mean, based on the numbers, twenty twenty five, two thousand nineteen, two thousand fourteen and thirteen. So it's just whenever it's been needed.
Essentially. So what happened during the height of COVID? Ambulances stopped being manufactured by a very specific brand. Um so Chevy quit making ambulances. Um so that kind of put everybody behind. So that's when the ambulances then started being three years out on order. It used to be that you could pretty much have a new ambulance when you wanted it. Um so we got a little bit behind. They weren't available. We also had one that just the two thousand twelve that you'll see. Um that was the old two one seven. That ambulance didn't run for almost a year and a half to two years. So the fleet that we currently have was in service, actively rotating out. Nobody rotated to Medic Four where it went to get its preventative maintenance. Uh because two one seven was essentially Medic Four that didn't run. So getting us onto a maintenance plan and making sure that we get into a good rotation would allow us to keep our fleet in proper working order.
Most definitely. Very much needed. Where uh where do you take ambulances now for service?
Typically, we have to take them to a specialized shop, so they go over to sideline. Um that's just across the Stark County line. Otherwise, we've had them serviced. Um if you want the detailed report, I have the last five. Okay, sure, sure. But um Jenkins can do like tire rotations, brakes, things like that for us. Jim Dobson and when I'm at Chrysler, they essentially do our oil changes, rotations as we need them. But any specialty components, a lot of our local dealerships are not comfortable with pulling the ambulance apart because they have special modifications to them, so they actually go across the line to sideline.
Mm hmm.
I think a rotation plan is very much needed. I think it would help for budgeting purpose and I think it would help with the problems that you're experiencing. I think normal maintenance as well. A source well obviously advertises throughout the state, so you have to bid in hand for that. So do you currently have the funds for uh?
We do. Just have to do an additional.
An additional per. Okay.
Yeah.
And what would be the approximate cost again for a new ambulance? Or the one that you're proposing here?
Without adding the additional features, it sits at two nineteen. Adding the additional features, get to the actual plan here. We're looking at two hundred and sixty four thousand, two hundred and twenty three, and that's with the oxygen tank lift that is with the power load power lift system. So the cot that essentially will lift itself, prevent back injuries. And then there's one more additional to it.
Okay.
But it would be a twin to our current brand new truck that's in Francisville.
How soon would you get it if if the if we approved it, the commissioners approve the additional appropriation?
He says two to three months, but I know where it's sitting right now. So I think it's just going through and adding the power load, the O two lift, and then the graphics.
Okay. I'm good with that. Excuse me, the council will approve the additional appropriation. So.
I'll make. I know it. Price and.
With the council's approval for additional appropriation?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve uh moving forward with the purchase of a new ambulance pending council's approval of additional appropriation. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Nathan?
Morning.
Morning.
Uh updates on the courthouse project. Again, no new change orders, project finances. Current contingency balance of twenty thousand dollars. I have not spent anything directly out of contingency, but this total reflects the reallocation of fourteen thousand, nine hundred and dollars, nine hundred dollars and fifty cents from contingency to our I T and furniture fixtures and equipment appropriations within the project budget. Between those two budgets, we have about thirty six thousand dollars available and are looking at probably five or six more invoices between the two, most of which will be fairly small. Um the final furniture order, a couple of last pieces from the furniture restorer. Um probably, I assume, a charge from rowing from the assistance that Kyle provided last week in trying to get the sound system to cooperate. Uh those sorts of things. It's recently reported Ton and Blank has about three hundred thousand in their construction contingency. Some of that will be used to cover the roof leak repairs, forthcoming window caulking, a few other odds and ends before they're able to release the remaining funds. Uh project progress, final drywall and paint, and I guess wallpaper too. You'll see if there are these repairs in my in here and in my future office suite uh to repair leak damages will happen this week. As will touch up painting elsewhere as needed. We received our day two furniture order on Wednesday. There were a few issues with that delivery that will be corrected on the day three order, which I hope to place today, a little bit later than originally anticipated. Our furniture provider has offered a couple of options for replacing the judge's bench here in the meeting room. But I believe that our furniture restorer is going to be able to provide a more cost effective option. We still have a handful of smaller tasks remaining ahead of us. Um ordering and installing additional signage, both interior and exterior as well as an outdoor display case where we'll post some of these signs. So the the plan, I think, is that it'll be in front of the steps and we'll have clear signage to go under the steps to entry, not to go up the steps. And there will also be room in this case for me, Teresa, Carla, Jenny to post notices. It'll be just an exterior grade locking case, so we'll have a key and time to put the agenda up. You could put it there instead of people having to come into the vestibule, that sort of thing. It'll all be weather protected out there. Um so that, adjusting the motion sensors on lights throughout the buildings and Tyler, the electrician, might have a few other odds and ends while he's here for that. Um updating the combination locks on the vault doors and potentially adding another webcam or two. All those those last couple of things being things that we'll hold off to see where we end up with contingency. But any questions?
Um can you keep in mind, just in in talking with Rowing last week, uh and I guess it'll depend on how everything goes here for the next few meetings, but they recommended.
The acoustic panels?
Yep.
The buffering?
Yep.
Yeah, and they gave the name of two different companies that could do that. So if if some of that money can be maybe, you know, earmarked for making sure that.
That'll probably be something that waits till uh the construction contingency is released, but yes.
Okay. No, uh the only other thing is keys. I've had questions of who has keys for the building.
I think at this point, Larry, maintenance? For the building itself though, like the exterior doors, does anyone other than maintenance have keys?
Nobody has keys to the exterior. It's all fobs. Okay, do you have a master key then for everything? Okay. Okay, do employees?
No, I had one until we were getting a little bit closer to the end of construction. Larry has mine back now. And I just have one to my office suite into this room.
Okay, so do you open the building in the morning? Larry, you open it up for all the employees and all that.
Initially, it will be automatic.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, yeah, that.
What's the timeline from the automatic?
I gotta check. I'll check because that's communication between both rowing and the subcontractor who did the low voltage I T stuff for the electricians.
What about the two doors to enter building, exterior doors out front? Are we going to lock those and put those on an electronic timer?
They won't be on a timer whether we want to lock them or not. That's between, that's a commissioner's discretion between you and Larry, I think, at this point, whether I mean, you and I have talked about it. There's, I don't know if it's necessary, but there's value in maybe protecting from vandalism inside there.
Yeah, you mentioned that, Don.
Yeah.
Um so currently the outside doors are open into the vestibule or wherever you want to call it. Those are open all the time, correct? So anybody can come in the outside doors and get in. They just can't get in the main doors that enter into the building. And you had asked, is there a?
Is there a way of locking those?
Yes.
Right.
It can be locked. It would just be one more step for Larry or somebody else in maintenance in the morning and the evening to open them and close them.
What was that? How many, how many of the words? Hey.
And what would have been the advantage to leaving that outside door open? What what was the thinking in doing that originally?
So I I think it part partially was a misunderstanding on the part of the design team, part just a precaution in the rare event that for some reason somebody would need to be granted access into this building after hours and did not have very rare. Uh you know, it's not like the jail, not the justice center where somebody might be going to visit or getting somebody out of jail or putting money in their commissary account, that sort of thing. But if they could not get into the vestibule, they would not be able to communicate with somebody in the Justice Center to be let. So let's say I needed to get in and I forgot my, I had left lost my keys at home or something. There's that. I can just, I'm like, hey, dispatch, it's Nathan. I need to get into the building. Can you let me in? That sort of thing. But
Okay.
For both security and weather purposes, that control, that video phone is in the vestibule and not in, not on the exterior wall.
Gotcha.
So it's limited benefit, but there is a little bit of benefit and realistically, because you can't even open those interior doors with a key and you have to have the maglock released. Worst case scenario, other than the potential vandalism, somebody tries to break in. We're just replacing classes, glass panes on two doors instead of one because they're not going to have any way of getting through there unless they smash both doors at that point.
Okay.
I think you look, talk to him, Larry, and ask for the cost of that. Something to look into in my my opinion.
I would agree with that. I don't know that there's a reason. I mean, if that's the only purpose in having those outside doors open, I I see more risk in leaving them open than than closing them. Yeah.
Basically, I would. Run off with.
Anything else?
If you have any questions?
Anything else for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. P S updates.
Morning, Tim.
Good. Good morning. How's everyone doing?
Good, thank you.
Good. Alright, today I'll be covering all four projects, May Apple, Moss Creek, Bottle Brush, and Mammoth. I'll save Mammoth for last as that one has had the most activity. For May Apple, we had a progress meeting last week. Uh the alignment meeting that was originally planned for late October has now been postponed to November. Uh this is due to ongoing coordination between May Apple and A E P. That coordination is the next required step for that project to move forward. As a result, construction is now anticipated to mid to late next summer. Moss Creek. Uh the progress meeting we had earlier was canceled due to some developer site issues that came up. Uh the developer did indicate the overall project schedule remains on track for next summer. Uh we will provide an update once that meeting is rescheduled. Next is Bottle Brush. Uh no major updates to report since our last meeting. As far as we know, the schedule remains unchanged with pre-construction work expected in the spring, followed by construction next summer. And then on to Mammoth. Uh construction continues across all three sections. The fines that were to be issued last week have been postponed due to a few photo discrepancies between parties and we're working through those disputes. Uh we will move forward with those fines this week. And then following next week, we will be issuing the next notice, followed by the fines the following week. There was a light complaint that Commissioner Jenny brought up during the commission or during the construction meeting last week, two weeks ago, I apologize. Uh it had been adjusted and resolved and no further reports of issues have been noted. Uh road repairs and maintenance will continue and ongoing coordination between the developer, highway department, and V S are ongoing. We're also continuing coordination with the auders office to sort through project related invoices as the financial side of this work progresses. Uh there's been active discussion between the billing department and the developer regarding the vegetation and screening plan. We are tracking this coordination between both parties and we'll report back once there's something more concrete to share. Next steps over the next few weeks, we'll be conducting a sit down between the developer, the county leadership, and legal counsel to outline the next phases of the county developer contract. This is also going to include a breakdown of how our hours and activities have been moving forward, covering different coordination parts with the county, the developer, our inspection and public engagement to ensure full transparency and accountability moving forward. This concludes my updates and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions?
No, I have none. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Alright, discussion items. E M H study. This is the ambulance study.
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's done. I think the status was that and and speaking with Natasha about it, there were some concerns that she had raised, which I guess is really more for the commissioners to consider than the legal department. I know Attorney Schram um was sent a copy of the final contract. Um to my knowledge, the hospital board has not considered it. So I I guess my thought would be, and I don't know if Natasha wants to discuss this or if this is something you would think more appropriate to call like an executive session, I just don't. I I don't know that it makes a bunch of sense to continue working on something that may or may not continue, but if it may be more appropriate for an executive session, I'd welcome your thoughts on that.
I would agree to an executive session.
So perhaps and perhaps we can set something up before the end of the day. But I mean, it's done at this point, but I would like Natasha to be able to speak about her concern.
So um Attorney Schram indicate with the next hospital board meeting.
He did not. He had just indicated that he was aware of the changes and that he would be bringing it up to them. I'm happy to. I can send a follow up email now and and tell him that we discussed it morning and try to get a date for you of when that is. So as far as the county's position, I'm we're ready to go whenever.
Thoughts? Thoughts?
I think it's fine, if you feel like the discussion needs to be executive session, I'm fine with that, I mean, I understand. Yeah, and I understand some of your concerns with it, so. So at this point, you're saying, Jacob, it's at a standstill with the hospital until we discuss it a little.
Yeah, we've, we have made the changes and I'm, I'm fine with it as it sits, Natasha had raised some concerns to me that may affect on whether it goes forward or not, which, you know, the actual nuts and bolts of that are probably better for an executive session. However, if you guys wish to move forward, I think your, your two options would be either to have the hospital approve it, sign it, send it and then we approve it, or we can sign it, send it to the hospital to approve and then if they have concerns, they can send it back, but I guess if, if there's concerns that this may not even be in the best interest of the county, that's probably a, a discussion that needs to happen first.
Right, I would agree with that.
I personally think we need a, a study, I think we need a comprehensive plan too. I think we need an ambulance study. But I, I do, I do believe that maybe the hospital should prove first than us because if we approve it. If we, if we approve it and they have questions or concerns about it, because if Attorney Schram, their board has not had an opportunity to look at it, or maybe they have, but they've just not come together. I think it's for not for us, back to square one.
I'm happy to send him an email this morning and get you a date of their next board meeting, so that you're aware of that. And then if we need to set up an executive session to discuss with Natasha, we can do that as well.
And I would appreciate that, I think you've got a, a good deal of information that we need to consider before anything really moves forward. I hate to see the hospital take the time to even do it if it's not something that we're going to entertain based on the information that you provide, so. Yeah.
Do you want me to reach out to the other alternative survey company to see what kind of a quote that they'll give us? The one that the state recommended?
Yeah, be prepared for that.
Okay.
Now, on the lines of executive session, we are going to call it executive session for Monday, October the twenty-seventh at, at eight-thirty. Purpose of that, first purpose is to interview prospective candidates for a position. And then we could tie that in with personnel issues as well and other items that deal with it. Sound good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm, I will send Attorney Schram an email right now just to add, to try to see if I can get you guys a date of when their next meeting is.
Very good. Any other items for discussion?
Yeah, next Monday. I have been talking with Jacob about the, the road that we've been trying to get closed and the the, and, or individuals, the private citizens are getting a little irritable that nothing has been finalized yet. So I talked with Jacob, he was looking up language or law to determine whether the county can in fact deed that ground to those individual landowners.
You're talking about the road out off of one-nineteenth. I do recall stating, and I like you might have a better understanding, whenever something like that's been done before, the landowners are supposed to go to their attorneys to get the paperwork for us to approve, so do you know, Jenny, if they've done that?
They haven't, they're waiting to look at surveying because in order, in order to even have the public hearing, we need to have the, correct, we need to have.
Yeah, there's, there's a resolution that would be done and there will be a legal description that will need to be obtained so that the commissioner's deed can be effectuated. So if they want to have that surveyed and then come to us, I can prepare the resolution and then there would be a deed that would be prepared.
So do you know if they've had a certain, a survey done yet?
No, what, what I was working with Jacob, they thought that the county would provide that survey and in talking with Jacob, no, the county is not going to do that. And Gary, County Highway gave me reasons for that too, so I was just making sure with Jacob that it is the responsibility of those private landowners. And it is, so I will go ahead and reach out to them now, tell them to go ahead and get the survey done and when the survey is done.
We can get the resolution prepared and move forward.
Right, right, so good, that clears it up. No, there's no controversy at all, no, I think they're all in agreement, it's just, yeah, it's just who's going to, who's responsible for the surveying, yeah. And that's kind of where the hang-up has been, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? At this time, we'll take public comment. They ask that you come up to the podium, state your name, where your residence is, and please limit your comments to approximately two minutes.
Phil Meyer, I want to thank Gary Kruger and his crew for some work that they've done south of my house. They have a good job cleaned up after, they were cutting the brush back and they done a good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I make a.
Motion?
Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
We have a motion as second to adjourn the meeting, those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed.